Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for April 23, 2019. I'd like to get right into our agenda and start with the first item, which is public input on non-agenda items. Do I have anybody here who would like to speak to a non-agenda item? Please come forward, please. If you would state your name for the record, please. Appreciate it. Yeah, just in the, there's a little button on that microphone to push the button and it's, and when it turns green, it'll be on.
My name is Sheila Dodge. My husband and I, Brad Dodge. We have Dodge Electric and have lived in Camden for several years now. And I just want to read a letter that you have received already, but just to have it on the record here on taped concerning the marijuana issue. We didn't get to come to the hearings because my husband was in the hospital. So that's the reason I wrote the letter to start with. But I did go to the zoning board meetings, some of them, and voiced my concerns there as well. So I just want to read this real quick for you.
Please.
This is what I had written March 19 of this year. Because my husband and I are not able to attend this March meeting of the 26th public hearing, my husband and I would like to express our concerns about the proposed amendments to the Camden zoning ordinance that would be for the purpose of regulating the commercial cultivation of cannabis. As residents of Camden, we do not believe that the growing and the use of marijuana in our township would be good or beneficial to our town and its people. Please consider what it would mean for all of us, especially for our children. We thank you very much, Brad and Sheila Dodge.
You leave it on. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Do we have any other input from the public, please, sir? And also if you'd state your name, please, you'd appreciate it.
Am I on here?
You are on. You're on.
My name is Bob Gassett. I live over on Thomas Street in Camden, and I've been involved with the Riverwalk and the Tannery project for probably something like 12 years at various involvement levels. But I just became aware recently that there's a proposal from the Economic Development Committee to potentially put the entire piece of property out for sale. Am I expressing that correctly?
Please continue.
Okay. Yeah, and I was just shocked to hear that because I thought the Tannery Work Group and the whole process that has been going on for 10 years kind of led to a place of consensus with great ideas of what to do with the park. And one of those ideas is not to be selling it. And I was just curious if the Select Board was aware of this.
Yeah, that's what my clarification was going to be, the following. Yes, we are. The process is very common, we're going through right now where an RFP was developed, is currently being reviewed by one of our committees, the Community and Economic Development Committee. They were working on it as late as last night, I believe, in long hours. And after that, it will come to the attention of the Select Board for review, and that's planned to probably be on May 7, at which time it will be an agenda item here for discussion by all to address all the issues that many people have asked questions on, et cetera, et cetera.
Is it fair to ask, does the Select Board feel like this is totally contradictory to what we've been trying to do?
I don't want to get into a discussion on a non-agenda item because it's a non-agenda item, but I can tell you, we're listening to all discussions, all arguments, all pros and cons, and I would hope every one of us would approach it with an open mind for what is best for the taxpayers and the voters of Camden.
Actually, I have a little something I'm going to read during my Select Board report.
Go ahead.
You want me to do it right now?
Oh, you want to wait? We can probably wait. That'd be next. But yes, yeah, we understand the concerns, trust me. We're not waving a hand over it or using, we're going to pay attention to it, but it's really an agenda item, probably on May 7. It'll be announced in advance for that meeting, including the RFP.
We've discussed multiple times.
Yes, we've discussed this. We've had many, many discussions, thank you, Allison, about this whole issue on various Select Board meetings, and this is not the first time. There's been, I can, myself have been involved in dozens of discussions about this over the last month, so it's not foreign to us.
Okay.
And the history, by the way.
I had a fear that it was foreign to you.
Well, that's a good question, because there's a lot of history here.
There is a lot of history.
And I'll be the first to admit, on Select Board, I've only been on board for almost two years, but believe me, we've done, each of us, I know, has done a lot of research and, look, and been reminded of the history too, which is a good thing. So it's not lost on us.
Okay, fair enough.
Thanks for coming. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to discuss anything that's a non-agenda item, sir? Again, state your name if you would, please.
Name's Jeff Pittman. So I'm going to continue on the Tannery bend for a moment here. So I'm trying to weigh this all out, and I've come up with a couple of questions that I would find very useful to have some answers to. So do you have an environmental impact assessment somewhere telling us what's in the ground, what's leaching, what is not leaching currently?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it is not called an impact report, though it's called something else. But yes, there's been numerous testing down the site, and we have reports on that.
Okay. And has there in any of this been any discussion about how the land is treated and whether it would be stable if it's left alone?
We are.
Just mildly landscape to just prevent runoff and other problems?
Extensive discussion. I mean, that's, that's part of this whole, we're in the process of, we've received $200,000 as part of the EPA cleanup grant, and it's to expand upon the work that's already been done. There were things that still needed cleaning up here or there, different parts of the site are impacted differently. So now the task is to try to figure out, depending on what is going to happen with that site and where, you know, the community space would be, where this space, that's how we're going to decide how to allocate that $200,000 worth of work and where it makes the most sense to, should we just leave this encapsulated? Should we, you know?
So that leads to the question, then, if it's undisturbed radically, is it stable land, or is a remediation going to be necessary?
You're hitting it to a discussion of a lot of, a lot, a lot of reports that are on the record, in the public record, by the way, we'd be happy to make those available for you to take a look at. Well, they are, but I just want to get into a bit about what's existing, what's not during a non-agenda item, because we're going to get into this in a couple of weeks.
So my basic request is, is that somehow or another this information be brought to the forefront where it's easily accessible to all the rest of us? Because I see this becoming a hotbed of discussion here very soon.
Sure.
And it would be really a whole lot easier to know these things. It'd also be very nice to know whether this money that you've gotten, and grant money, is able to be used for, say, they decided they wanted to keep it a park and just leave things encapsulated. Could you also use the funds for this, or does it all have to be for an economic development cause?
Combination.
It can be. Okay, but that makes a big difference as people weigh in on all of this. So, I mean, essentially, that's all I want.
Okay.
But I would love to have that information out somewhere where I can access it and everybody else can.
Are those reports accessible?
Yeah, I mean, they're all, it's, because I remember doing this before I was on the Select Board. I was constantly sending emails, send me this report, send me this report, I don't believe this. So it's definitely, it's, it's all out, and sometimes Janice would say, oh, it's actually on the town website, here, here, here. But it's very, I think it would make lots of sense to try to compile all of the documents that we have and put them in one place so that it's not a matter of chasing them.
Should we do that before the 7?
Oh, yes. I even have a few things on my list that I keep asking for, that I, that I want to find, so this will be perfect.
I'd love to come back on the 7th if it is an agenda item and actually be armed with information.
Sure, sure, understood. That's a good, good idea.
And feel free to email us, too.
Yeah, absolutely. You can always email and request, you know, that you would like to find following document information. We can point you to the right place, but we'll let you know in advance. So if it's, we haven't done the agenda for the 7th, yeah, but that's the current plan.
I understand all this, but, so, all right, I said my piece.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public input on non-agenda items? Not seeing any hands, we revert to Select Board reports. Anybody want to start?
I can start with the Tannery.
Good segue.
I'd like to segue into it.
So I figured I would just read, I've been also sitting through the Tannery meetings for years as a, before I was on the Select Board, after, had many frustrations with the process, many questions, huge fan of the Riverwalk, it's probably my favorite thing in town, but watching the CDAC meeting last night and then seeing some of the comments that came out after it was definitely upsetting in the sense that, and it's, it's a natural part of the process, that people get a hold of bits and pieces of information and then they react to it. And I've certainly been on that side of things before, too, sending out emails telling everybody to show up at a, at a meeting, and, you know, people only have party information. But, so this is what I wrote earlier, and I figured I might as well just read it at the Select Board meeting tonight, because not everybody follows me on Facebook. It says, "I would like to clear up a few misconceptions about the request for proposals that is being prepared for development options in conjunction with the EPA Brownfield cleanup grant at the former Tannery. The town is not seeking to remove public access nor push out the Camden Farmers Market, which has been the best thing to happen there since the Riverwalk, in my opinion. All the RFP does is not exclude the possibility of the property being sold under the right conditions. It makes clear that the site is currently used by the highly valued Camden Farmers Market, and I believe a developer would have to be crazy not to carve out a place for them in the proposal. Most importantly, any sale of the property, or even a portion of it, would be subject to a full town vote, and this is also made clear in the RFP. There are many ways to accomplish community goals for that property, and town ownership is not the only way. The Riverwalk easement is already set in stone, and so that path will be there forever with public access and is not part of the RFP. Additional deed restrictions would also stay with the property forever, and if they are violated, the property has to be returned, kind of like what would happen if the town ever tried to put a store on the village green. Many people in town do feel strongly that the Tannery property needs to generate some revenue to help offset taxes and the high cost of the cleanup. Many of us worry that Camden is becoming a place where the average person cannot afford to live and work, and as a town with more parks than we can currently maintain, I worry about the long-term economic impact of trading out commercial space or even possible housing for more taxpayer-supported parks. By making the RFP too narrow, we worry that we would end up excluding possibilities that may not be immediately apparent even to us. For example, some private businesses may wish to have a playground and green space component of their proposal based on their own business interests. A deed restriction could require public access. There are some developers also that may be thrilled to capitalize on the increased traffic that would be brought through the Farmers Market being there. Perhaps the Farmers Market itself would want to purchase the whole site, or maybe even a business that includes a playground or trampoline park and co-working spaces. You get to work while your kids play for a small fee. Let's just see what comes of this. By the same token, Camden residents at least are entitled to know about it if there happens to be someone out there who wants to pay $2 million for the property with no restrictions. It's highly unlikely, but think of what kind of an awesome setup we could create for the Farmers Market and playground on a different site if we had that kind of money. Again, I see it as an unlikely outcome that the whole property would be sold, but we do not wish to exclude proposals before even receiving them. Part of getting this to pass a town vote is assuring residents that we have looked at all options. Maybe no one at all will want to buy it, and then the park proponents will have a stronger case than ever that the town has no choice but to keep putting money into it. Any intelligent developer will know enough to research the history of the property, and I personally think they'd be crazy not to include the Farmers Market as a component of the proposal. Anyway, the Select Board is in no way inattentive to this issue. We very clearly directed town staff and support CDAC's recommendation that the RFP be kept as open as possible. We will be looking forward to reviewing proposals, and everything will be very transparent. Believe it or not, there's actually a pretty diverse and representative group of community-minded and well-informed people on the Select Board and CDAC. This is the time that creative minds should be getting together and thinking about what proposals they can put together. They do not all need to come from developers. Schools, nonprofits, individuals, et cetera, should all start talking. My personal dream would be like a mega swap shop that includes building materials and other reusable items salvaged from the waste stream. It would work perfectly with all the community elements already envisioned, and I think it could generate a good deal of revenue. Portland has a great architectural salvage store. If I weren't so busy, I'd probably be writing my proposal right now and preparing to recuse myself when it came to the Select Board vote. Anyway, we are not evil people scheming to get rid of the Farmers Market. Let's work together and recognize that there may be opportunities out there we've never even thought of.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Allison. You have any other Select Board reports beyond that?
Oh, I'm going to save it for the video that's at the end, which counts as part of my Select Board report.
Cheryl, do you have anything you want to?
I can't top that right now.
Mark?
I, of course, have a number of things. I attended yesterday the Energy Committee meeting, and, which was now, which is on YouTube, was streamed yesterday. We're trying to get most of our committee meetings streamed, and so people can be more aware of the involvement of the citizens of the town in the meetings. There was a little pushback on that from one of the members that was uncomfortable with being streamed live. So, you know, it's interesting to see how it goes, but, see how this procedure goes. But one of the things that did come out of the Energy meeting, you know, if you're not aware, the town is, is working on LED streetlights, and we've got a company involved, and then decisions are starting to be worked on for that about the kind of bulbs, the kind of locations for the streetlights. We will save a considerable amount of money by taking over ownership from CMP and, and changing to LED, so it'll be a win-win for the town. And again, I recommend going to YouTube and looking for the Town of Camden, looking for that meeting to hear more about the individual things with that. And at the same time, we're also looking into a number of different options for expanding solar for the Town of Camden. And a lot of that discussion has been at the Energy Committee as well, and there've been meetings about that. So things are moving forward to making this a more energy-efficient town, and looking forward to that. And then turning to the Opera House, there are some great shows coming up, some interesting things. I just stole some posters from the hallway. This, this Saturday night, April 27, Dave Morrison has been working on a project called Maine Made Music. We're looking for bands that are, and artists that are from Maine, and highlighting them. And there's two, there's a big show this weekend, Micromass and the Amarenas, Amarentis Quartet with Sarah Hallie Richardson. If you go to the Camden Opera House website, camera, camdanooperhouse.com, you can see videos of the artists, so you can decide if you want to go. Great, great show. One of the other new events that we've been doing, I've mentioned, is the Blue Cafe, which is a free event on Friday nights, usually one Friday a month, and it's free, there's a bar provided by Forty Paper. It's a great event. Doors open at 7 o'clock. The next one coming is Friday, May 3, and it's something I've been looking forward to. It's called Storytime Moms Tell All, and it's a number of mothers that have had children growing up. I think mothers with children now in the middle school are getting together to tell stories about raising their children, and some of these mothers are some of the funniest people I've ever heard in my life, and when they tell stories about their kids, it's hysterically funny.
Can I see that?
It will be very crowded, it's going to be very successful. That's Friday, May 3. And then lastly, lastly, we've been working really hard. Primary Matt Brown has been the leading force behind this, he used to own Manny's CD Store. There's going to be a new festival in Camden. We've been working on this for a long time to bring in more events, and this one will be called Jazz in June. And it's a jazz festival, three days of music, food, and fun. It will be June 14 through the 16. There will be events on Friday at the Opera House, a Friday night dance party at the Snow Bowl. Saturday will be Jazz at the Snow Bowl, all afternoon concert, and then the feature concert will be Saturday night at the Opera House, and then there'll be a jazz brunch on the Sunday, the 16th, at 16 Bayview, Jazz around town, and a Monday night jazz orchestra at the amphitheater. So if you want to go to, tickets are available, information available at camdanooperhouse.com, and also Jazz in June, the website is jazzinjuncamdenme.com. And it's, it's a great event, there's a great lineup, everybody's already booked, it's going to be a terrific event, and just trying to get it out there. So that's it for me.
Thank you very much, Mark. Just a couple of housekeeping items I wanted to mention. One, there has been a lot of talk recently about the Route 1 North Project. I do know, just for everybody's edification, that MDOT has been out on Route 1 the last week, doing their, beginning of their survey of rights-of-way issues for that mile and a half. They're preparing to approach those of us who live along that stretch of road for discussions on right-of-way acquisition for that project. That process usually takes anywhere from 10 to 14 months, depending on how complicated and how nasty people like myself get, but realistically, that suggests that this project is well as planned, is on track, too. It's probably talking late 2020 or early 2021 for start of project, just FYI. Secondly, just an update on the Harbor Committee. Many people are asking questions about the Harbor Committee, and we haven't forgotten about it, we won't forget about it. What's occurred, and I've mentioned this before, we actually received 28 applications for the, basically seven positions of the, of the Harbor Committee. We usually can't get two people to volunteer for anything elsewhere, but it's, it's wonderful to have that level of interest in the town and its beautiful harbor, because, huh? Actually, we're talking about, we're talking about hangings, but I've got to mark that one, but, no, it's true. Hangings, the harbor master.
No, we can't do that.
No, we can't do that. But anyway, no, I'm just kidding, of course, but I think there's one of the, obviously, when you have that many people interested, you've got to do a decent job of how to classify, how to choose. It's just not somebody I know, or somebody he knows, she knows, we, we're not doing that. Couple of things in parallel have gone on. One, the town has been involved in redrafting, updating our committee guidelines for committees to bring it to, at least, which Mark just mentioned, one is videoing of, of our committee meetings, and so that's an example of some of the things. We want to get that out to all committees, including to all the applicants of the, of the Harbor applicants. Two, as part of that, we will be emailing, planning to email all of the applicants in the next week with some clarification, so there's understanding of the expectations and blah, blah, regarding the Harbor Committee. We expect to get those responses back quickly.
And follow-up questions.
That's the follow-up questions, absolutely, follow-up questions, and get that back quickly. And get that back quickly so we can synthesize, and certainly, I can't think of any reason why this can't happen in May. I don't want to pick a day, because I've already picked three dates and they've all failed. So, but in May, we need to get back on track, because there's a lot of stuff we need to get involved in. So, that's the end of my reports. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the approval of the Select Board meeting minutes of April 9th, 2019 still.
They look good to me.
I had a couple of comments, a couple of comments, they were just editorial. One is on item three, which is approval of Select Board minutes dated March 12th and March 26th. There's a motion to approve the minutes of March 26th. There was a parallel motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 12th also, which is not stated in the meeting minutes, and that was also a 5-0-0 vote.
Wasn't it that one person wasn't there, so they couldn't vote? Didn't?
Senator Corzo?
I want to say at least one of those.
It was 4-0-0. Yep.
We could go back to the tape.
We could, we could check. But the point was, I think the March 12th meeting, one of us missed that meeting, and Allison's point, I think that's true, we need to verify that, but we need to at least have recorded that that March 12th agenda was, I'm sorry, meeting miss, was a motion seconded and approved, and I think it might be 4-0-0. Let's double-check that. And the other one was similar, and it's way, way down on the, let me scan to it here. It's on the warrant articles. And, yeah, it was the, of course, now I can't find it. One second, let me just, there was one of the warrant articles where the, yeah, it was the Clean Community Ordinance, which was, I believe, 8B. It talks about, agenda seconded, Mark Ratner motion, no discussion, but there's no vote there. It should be 5-0-0 on that one.
Nice job.
Well, somebody has to do stuff.
I was not thorough this week, so thank goodness you were.
Well, I thought that was important, because if you don't get it, it's going to be on the warrant, so we want to make sure.
I'm disappointed in myself.
No, 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 you know, we can rely on each other.
Yes.
Anyway, with all that said, other than that, those changes, can I get a motion to accept the?
I'll make a motion, we approve Select Board minutes of April 9th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor, 4-0. Next on the agenda, we have two consent agenda items for the renewal of virtual in lodging license for the Camden Whitehall Inn and the renewal of virtual license and lodging license for Noren Vega Inn at 63 High Street. Are there any objections to the items on the consent agenda? Not hearing any, they were hereby adopted. Next item we would like to discuss, then, would be the Harbor Ramp Replacement Project by our illustrious Harbor Master, Steve Pixley. And I use the term illustrious loosely.
He's getting it hard tonight.
Steve is really a great asset for the town, I have to say.
I was caught in the rain.
You may notice, it's officially spring now, because Steve is wearing shorts.
Yeah, and today I almost caved, caved and went at lunch and went and got long pants. I don't know what's going on, it's cold out there right now.
You could email these ahead of time.
Those are pictures, and I got wet, because I was actually with Gertl Endorski outside today, looking at the site. The reason that we bring this to you now is because we have been talking about getting a different ramp for the main dock system for many years, and I have Captain Stetson here to talk on that point, if you need to hear him.
Which one's the main dock system?
The main dock is where the three green schooners are at the very end, it's the overnight dock system, that's pretty much right in front of the yellow office, yeah. So, that's where we have overnight transient folks that come visit, and they spend money, and they spend a night or two there. That's the overnight dock system. Now, the ramp that's there now still had one more year left, where I was going to replace it, but Bill Glover about two, three weeks ago said to me, hey, there's a ramp that somehow, Gertl Endorski, they over-ordered it, it was something that was, one thing was wrong with it. It's a perfectly good ramp, it's 43 feet long, it's exactly what we wanted for that low tide, the folks that are a little bit older have a hard time getting up the ramp at low tide, because it's such a steep angle. This is the exact length we would have ordered. It's there, it's a $14,000 ramp any day of the week, we can get it for $8,500. If we don't buy it now, we're going to have to buy one a year from now, two years from now, for sure. That's going to be, you know, $14,000, $15,000. I have been putting away money in the reserve, I have it. So, basically, what I'm asking for is that, I just talked with, we're going to drive, pull four old pilings up, we're going to, we're going to put four new pilings down, slightly alter two of their locations, because this is a wider ramp, and Gertl Endorski said, the one odd thing about the way this is laid out now is, if you look at an overview, the ramp is tilted at an angle from where.
It's a skew.
It's a skew from the way where the wharf is. And so, because of that, it doesn't have that much strength. That's why we're having a problem with the 10-by-10 that's curving over right now. I'm going to get a new 10-by-10, that's going to be brand-new. If, in two years, when we replace the wharf, if we go with a different system, the way we're going to design this, it's going to be easily adaptable to the new system. So, basically, the two new pilings that we drive, we're going to have a 4-by-8 piece of wood going between them, over that, and that's what the ramp is going to actually be affixed to, not with the wharf. We just have a small piece that the engineer puts it to make it so pedestrians can traverse over it. So, I need $17,000, that's what I'm saying.
I'll be, a second.
How much do you have in the reserve?
60.
I believe in reserve.
There are two reserves, one's for the piling replacement, which currently has $20,000, and then the other one has $112,500.
What's the other one for?
It is Harbor Projects.
Apple and Prove Me, yeah. So, I have been putting aside for this, I was going to take $4,000 out of piling reserve for the pilings, and then.
13.
13, thanks. Out of Harbor Reserve.
Is the current ramp just sort of reached the end of its life, is that?
One year.
It's real close. I had it, for next year, I was going to.
The new one's also ADA compliant?
This is a fully compliant ramp, this one, you can see the picture, it's a pretty nice ramp.
What are we going to do with the old one?
That's a good question. I could either offer it in-house to maybe someone like the Snow Bowl, they needed for something? They have a ramp that goes out over that small marshy area to get to the field.
Use it as a flat ramp?
We could even sell it, maybe, someone might want to buy it.
But it's kind of aged. Are the two new pilings in the cross tie going to be tied to the landing?
They are. They're going to be tied to the landing via threaded rod, and they're going to be pressure-treated. They don't think we should go with oak, because this is going to last.
I agree.
Basically, we're going to start going to pressure-treated or another composite, not oak. The oak pilings, they're cheap, but they don't last that long.
Questions? Go ahead, Mark.
I have no questions, I just want to say, I think it's a good idea, simply because there's so much infrastructure that constantly needs repair. If we can save some money in doing it a year early, which guarantees a little more level of safety, I don't see any reason not to do it.
Fine with it, too, I just want to make sure we don't throw the old one in the, and you won't, I know, we'll find a reuse option.
Oh, we definitely will, you know me. I'm not kidding. I still have the one from 20 years ago over at Highway.
Oh, good.
Makes good sense to me, seems like a good opportunity.
And I presume this will be a not to exceed $17,000?
Yes, it'd be 17 or less, that's what Carmen told me just now, but 17 is a pretty safe thing. Just because the piling work is going to be pretty extensive with the 2-hour marine barge, and I'm also getting two new hemlock 6-by-eights that go out to the outer pilings. We have to, because we've got to move them, because the ramp's wider, so I get one slightly larger. So, there'll be definitely some work, but it's all going to be stuff that, in two years from now, when we redo the wharf, that's going to stay where it is, we're going to have to redo that again. Stuff that needs to get done.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve the Harbor Ramp Replacement as detailed by Harbor Master Steve Pixley, for $17,000 or less.
Second.
I'd like to just clarify that, motion to, I just specified that of the 17, not to exceed $17,000, $4,000 will come out of the reserve for piles, and the other $13,000, if my math is correct, will come out of the reserve for the Harbor Projects.
Thank you.
With that said, any other comments or discussion? All those in favor? Oh, one second, we had one public comment by Elliot.
Is there a timeline?
Yeah, the timeline's ASAP. I mean, I want to get this done before it gets busy. Already, there's going to be a day and a half where some workers that are working for Ray are going to have to use a skiff from the Deserol Dock to get back and forth, but I've already talked to Ray about it, so.
With that said, I'd like to go to the vote, all those in favor, 4-0. Thank you very much, Steve. Thank you very much, Richard, for your help, too, and thank Carmen when you're here. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for two liquor licenses, the application of Noren Vega Inn at 63 High Street for renewal of a Class V Bed and Breakfast Liquor License, and an application for the Schooner Exploration Associates of Maine, doing business as Schooner Appel Door at 18 Bayview Landing for a public service Class 1 Spiritus and Vinus, why didn't they make these words easy? And malt liquor license, anyway, sorry.
We can call them, we could actually change the whole thing.
I think we should, I mean, this is like, I'm feeling like.
Aren't those our words?
1860, I think, but whatever. The, I mean, as we want to read the instructions for a public hearing, is what we need to do, the purpose of a public hearing is for us to get information from the public, so help us deliberate on the matters at hand. We ask each speaker, would like to speak for, against, or just talk to, to come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and to state your name and address, and to direct all questions through me. As a matter of courtesy, let's just keep all the comments at the podium, please, not from the audience. And after, everybody has had an opportunity from the public to speak, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and revert to deliberation by the Select Board. There'll be no more comments from the public at that point unless a Select Board member has a question of an individual who was spoken earlier. With that said, we'll take these one at a time, and the first would be the application of the Noren Vega Inn at 63 High Street for renewal of a Class V Bed and Breakfast Liquor License. Anybody here from the public who would like to speak to, for, against, or just speak to it at all? Okay, good. Then I will close the public hearing and revert to deliberation by the Select Board. Do I have any comments or questions from the Select Board members?
None.
Motion time.
I make a motion, let me go back to my motion. I make a motion that, come on, computer, I make a motion, my computer work faster. Thank you very much, I appreciate that, all in favor.
I replaced the hard drive on mine.
It wasn't clicking. I make a motion that we approve the application of the Noren Vega Inn at 63 High Street for renewal Class V Bed and Breakfast Liquor License, and application of the Schooner Exploration Associates of Maine DBA Schooner Appel Door, 18 Bayview Landing for a public service Class 1 Spiritus and Vinus, however those are pronounced, and malt liquor license.
We skipped right ahead, I want to make sure if anybody here who would like to speak for, against, or just talk to the application for the Schooner Exploration Associates of Maine DBA Schooner Appel Door. And seeing nobody, that's fine, the motion is fine. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, 4-0. Thank you very much, with that, I'll close the public hearing discussion. I know we do have some people here, though, from the Inns, if they'd like to make a comment, you're more than welcome to, while you have the opportunity to say hello to the public, it's up to you. You sure? I don't want to do all the talking here. There you go. Tell us how you.
Anytime we can hear about the Noren Vega Inn, it's such a beautiful building, love to hear about it.
Tell us how the roof is doing.
Welcome, or hello, and thank you, Sue Walzer, representing myself and Phil Crispo from the Noren Vega Inn at 63 High Street. Things are progressing as far as our repair on the roof. The top cedar shingles on the fourth floor are nearly done, and next week they will, later this week and then next week, will commence repair on the first-floor level of cedar shingles. So, we are fortunately making progress, so no complaints there. And looking forward to our seventh season, and hopefully it'll be our best one yet. Thank you for all, for your support as well, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sue, thank you, Phil. Would you like to say anything about the Whitehall?
Now you have to.
Now you have to, I'm going to embarrass you into it, sorry.
Hello, I'm Gwen Clemens, I'm the General Manager at Whitehall at 52 High Street in Camden here, and I just wanted to, you know, thank you for the license, of course, as always. We are opening up May 10th, so this will be the fourth season since Whitehall has been part of Lark Hotels, so we're excited to open up for Mother's Day weekend. We'll have a Mother's Day brunch, which we didn't have last year for the first time in 40 years, so we'll have that this year, so we're excited for that. And partnering again with Cafe Miranda out of Rockland for all of our events. So, looking forward to an exciting season.
Great.
So, thank you.
Look forward to it, too, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to our seventh agenda item, which is the consideration of the renewal of a license agreement for the Camden Farmers Market. Do you want to intro that, Jeremy?
Sure, I can.
Intro it at least, please.
So, this is, again, just, I took last year's license agreement, went through it, clarified some dates, and now Mike Bonner's here, and I understand that there's a date tweak that needs to be done again from there, but everything's, for the most part, the same as in years past. I did tweak, pulled out some of the Town of Camden's responsibilities. In the past, prior license agreement had the town responsible for paving the entrance, some of the potholes in the entrance, I removed that out of there, that was done. There was also, the town is responsible for living up trees, I took that out of there, because that's done and not an issue. I did leave one responsibility to the town, and that's to properly mow the area that the market will be located on, and that was, all that was left. I think that's all, really, we ought to be doing, from my perspective. And other than that, it's, for the most part, the same. It is the same, exact. There is no verbiage on trash, and maybe we want to include something like that, I don't know. Trash collection, I don't know. I assume they're taking care of it, it's just nothing spelled out in.
There isn't a paragraph on trash as I recall.
Is there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, let me just, let me just.
Thanks.
Quickly.
You read it more recently than me, Mark.
Licensee, at its expense, shall cause all vendors.
premises daily, I see that.
Any and all trash, debris, and organic matter from the premises on a daily basis.
Left behind, perfect.
Licensee.
There.
Shall also clean the premises on a daily basis, remove any and all trash, debris, and organic matter that may be left behind by the public.
Even when they're not there.
That's a good point.
Every day. I don't think.
You can probably work with them on that a little bit, but.
That was the intent, of course, but.
Not aware of any trash issues that have been brought to my attention at all since they've been there, so I'm not sure it's a real issue. And I know Mike Bonner from Bonner Farm is here, he represents the farmers' market, so I'm sure he could speak to that as well. There has been some talk in the past about SNAP EBT cards.
Yes.
And I did mention that to Mike in a conversation, an email that we, he and I had, and maybe he could speak to that. I know the Select Board in the past has brought that up, and I think it's probably prudent and appropriate. The Maine Farmers Market, Federation of Farmers Markets, has a program for farmers' markets to, working with USDA, to obtain the equipment that is needed, no charges, I understand, and the Maine Farmland Trust has a staff person that's devoted to working with farmers' markets to enable them to have SNAP and EBT machines and have those accepted at farmers' markets. So, I do think it is appropriate. That is not in this agreement. They're not looking to be there until May 11th. So, if it does need to be tweaked, if we can't come to an agreement with them now, I think it's, I think we have a little bit of time.
We could table to the 7th if we have to.
Maybe we could still let Mike talk about.
I think talking to Mike about it is probably a good idea.
Absolutely, please.
Just in general, about anything he wants to say, or.
Thanks, since Mike has come, why don't you come up and give us a little, thanks for Since Mike has come, why don't you come up and give us a little, thanks for coming?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Want me to take the mic here?
Oh, please.
So...
Introduce yourself.
I'm Mike Bonner, Bonner Farm, president of the Camden Farmers Market, to speak to the SNAP EBT issue. Four farms currently accept SNAP at the market, and that's Hubbard Brook Farm, Piecemeal Farm, Commonwealth Poultry Farm, and Bonner Farm, myself. We're looking into the market-wide SNAP program. It is kind of a whole nother bag. It's a lot more, and it just takes a lot, a lot of time to get rolling with the FNS number with the USDA, to get the, you know, you have to have a booth set up, and it's more involved. But we're looking into it, and we've been talking with the Federation of Farmers Markets about that. But four members take SNAP, so, you know...
How many, Mike?
Twenty-three, I think, this year? Yeah.
So is it, to, there's a separate system for doing it individually as opposed to market-wide?
Individually, you get an FNS number for your farm, and the government gives you their own card reader, and you can either pay $20 a month for their specific data plan to use the card reader, or you can create a hotspot to do it. And it's relatively easy. You just have to wait, basically, for the government to get you the number and then to get the machine. The machine's free, and, you know, it really depends on your demographic and where you are, whether or not accepting SNAP pays for the cost of the data plan, but most farmers just do it regardless of whether or not...
Mike, you've, you accept it yourself. Can you tell us what percentage of people take advantage of the program for you?
In general, or just in Camden?
Camden to start, and just compared to in general.
Yeah, so, in, in general, it's great. I mean, I don't know a farmer who doesn't want to accept SNAP EBT. And we try to make it as, you know, just treat them like a regular customer. It's a lot better than going to Hannaford and trying to get vegetables with SNAP, because if you don't get exactly the right dollar amount, it's, you know, you have to deal with all kinds of stuff. So using SNAP from the customer perspective and market is great. They tend to like it a lot. I haven't actually used it in Camden because we just got our machine, and we've just used it at our farm stand in Belmont. And we haven't used it at any of our Farmers Markets yet, so, but we'll have it...
You know, have any of the other vendors had it previous to this year?
Yeah, and I don't know how many customers. It's not huge, but it's there. And there's also Senior Farm Share pickups in Camden, which, you know, isn't SNAP EBT, but it's another low-income food access program. And that, you know, there's a fair amount of people who come to get fresh vegetables for the Senior Farm Share. And if you're not familiar with that, it's like a $50 credit that the state pays for seniors to have fresh fruits and vegetables.
That's great.
What about WIF? Do you take WIF?
The, oh, the WIC?
WIC, yeah.
WIC checks? Yes, we take, oh, geez.
I think I saw on your...
I don't know how many people take WIC. I haven't asked. But definitely the produce vendors take WIC.
Okay.
And I get a WIC check maybe once a month, I would say.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Another comment, Mark?
One more question.
Sure.
You mentioned 23 vendors for Saturdays now. Is that...
Yeah.
From last year, or is that, and can you fill us in on Wednesdays as well?
Yeah, so Saturday is about the same as last year. And actually, I think we're, we lost one, we have a four-week temporary slot that we, you know, have craftspeople apply, usually that's who applies for that, or somebody who's sort of starting out and they want to get a feel for doing a Farmers Market. They can come for four weeks and pay a reduced rate, and I think we lost one of our temporaries from last year. Wednesday is actually looking good. We got a produce farm who is excited and on board to come this year to add to it. Unfortunately, Stone Fox Creamery can't do it this year. Just some personal matters are going on. There's a good chance that they'll be back next year. I can't say for sure.
Taylor, any questions or comments?
No, thanks for coming, Tom.
Allison Moore?
Yeah.
Sure. Go ahead.
So, shoot, what was it? It was...
I can slip in what you're thinking if you want. I guess, well, the question I only had is, it's the topic, is what can we do in relation to this agreement that can incentivize the vendors to get on the SNAP EBT program? Because we, I think, at least I feel obliged to, you know, push the program for people, and we need to do something. I mean, sort of maybe demanding it as, you know, maybe a little extreme, perhaps, which most contracts do. But if we don't press on it a little bit, I'm afraid it's just not going to happen very quick.
Sure.
We could help get the word out, too, about, imagine if you're going to do it, then you want people to actually be using it. So, I mean, we could help a lot, I think, with getting the word out and even using through our General Assistance Program when people come in. Not to stereotype, but some of those people are SNAP recipients. And then even developing some sort of a voucher system ourselves would, you know, when people come in and we give them...
The voucher systems, like, you're talking about, like, maybe, like, dollar for dollar, dollar for half-dollar?
Like, the town, when we get, you know, sometimes we'll pay somebody's oil bill, or we'll pay them, like, we, a bill at Hannaford, we could give a voucher to the Farmers Market instead, which...
Those work really well. There's other markets that I've heard of doing similar things. There's some grants out there for markets to do that. Basically, if the whole market is going to accept SNAP, my understanding is that we need to have a booth, and so there's a manpower required. And that is the biggest challenge that markets have, is getting somebody, usually it's a volunteer, to be there and to, you know, just organize that whole system.
To be like a single point-of-sale location?
It's a single point-of-sale, yeah. Exactly. And then everybody come, you know, writes down their, well, I'm actually, I'm not sure how it works. I'm not in any markets that have market-wide SNAP and with that booth system.
I've never seen it either.
But some of the other farmers in the Camden Farmers Market can answer that question.
I just wonder if we shouldn't take a moment of breath to, between now and the next week or so, to look at the contract language and put something in that suggests strongly that we want to go in this direction, you know, without a hammer? And we could recraft and revisit on a May 7th if it's okay with you, Mike. We're not going to, I know you're starting the 11th and blah, 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 but I'd like to see some, I personally would like to see some language in there that addresses this and maybe even the vouchers.
Well, how about this as a compromise? How about we work towards that for next year? Because I've got to go back to my members, who, right now, half of them have probably thrown their phones in a mud pile because they're so mad at the weather right now on their farms. Getting them to all vote via email is, like, it's hard.
Fun.
And it's not necessarily true. And with this, this is a pretty big commitment. I mean, not that we wouldn't do it, I'm just trying not to get ahead of myself here.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Why don't we put some language in the agreement to just encourage the farmers to SNAP and see if we can up the percentage of people doing it...
Sure.
...by next year? See if we can, you know, because you don't have to do it, you can do it, people can sign on during the season as it's moving on, so they don't have to have it signed up by May 11th. So if we can put in a contract to encourage the use of SNAP, and, because one of the things I think Allison just mentioned, is if people find out that it's available there, you will get more people coming to the Farmers Market, and people will get better produce, better food, at a great, great price. So I think it's, and it will help you as well as help the citizens in Camden and anywhere else that are coming in.
People have definitely asked me about it. They've said, oh, the one in Rockland takes EBT, but Camden doesn't, and...
Would you have to go back to your 23 gang and ask for an adjustment like that to this contract?
As long as the language is vague enough, I don't think so.
Yeah, what I'd like, what I'd like it to, thanks. That's important.
I mean, not that they wouldn't be supportive. I'm not, I'm trying not to say...
No, I understand. We're running into the end of April. Maybe language is suggested Camden is considering, you know, future requirements for SNAP EBT, and we strongly encourage blah, 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 blah.
They're, they're all aware of this. I mean, I've been, you know, keeping with...
So I would suggest crafting some language into the agreement somewhere with that kind of wording, and then we could execute on the 7th? If that's okay with you, Mike.
And then also see if maybe there's a way, and Janice would be the person that would know, like, developing, how difficult would it be to develop some kind of town voucher system that we could give out to people that come in for assistance? You know, maybe there could be an incentive thing where any of the vendors that implement the SNAP system would also, you know, could also accept the town vouchers, and we would try it out.
I would just suggest that I'll talk to some of the farmers...
Yep.
...in the market who have, like, some of them do Bangor and Waterville, and they've got a lot more experience with this than I do.
Okay.
So they can speak to that, especially with the voucher system, trying to incentivize, incentivize things.
Yeah, not trying to complicate the situation, Mike. It's definitely a policy statement, and I think it needs to be made.
Sure.
Sure.
I'll work on drafting something on that.
Thanks.
Share it with Mike.
Thanks, Jeremy.
And then I'll reach out to the Maine Farmland Trust as well to see what they're doing.
All right.
I know they have hired a person specifically to address this issue in Farmers Markets, so I think that's a good thing.
Like, if we found a volunteer through one of our committees to do something, if you, you know, reach out with what you might need to make it more feasible, maybe one of the friends of the Tannery Park, or...
Maybe a good idea.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Well, with that, then, I'd suggest we will table this action item and reschedule it for May 7th agenda. If that's acceptable to the board members?
Yes.
Makes sense to me.
Right.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Curious if there's any comment from the public, maybe, on that?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Look, Mr. Mark?
I'd like to make a comment.
Please come forward. Just state your name and address, phone number, height.
Thank you, Mike.
Really quick, maybe, before Mark gets down, I just wanted, before you leave, Mike, I don't know if you're going to leave right this moment, do we want, if we come to an agreement with, with Mike and the Farmers Market, do we need Mike to come back on the 7th?
I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so.
I just don't want you to have to come back on the 7th. Somebody else might...
That's fine. Okay. That's fine. Thanks, Mike.
Yes. My name is Mark Haskell. I live up on Pearl Street, and I'm afraid I'm going to be the curmudgeon here tonight and say that, first of all, I support the Farmers Market. I think it's wonderful. I hope it can enlarge and expand and be a big part of Tannery Park in the future. However, as a businessperson in town, I was a businessperson for a number of years. I'm retired now and shut the business down, but I got taxed on my chair that I sat in and the camera I took pictures with. And we are offering the use of our town facility to people, for the most part, from out of town, coming in here, yes, providing a wonderful service, but they're getting it for free. I think every business in town that pays taxes in this town, including farmers and farm stands that sell products, are kind of, I'm looking at this saying, why are we giving stuff away for free so much? I think it's wonderful. But I talked with the library people today, and when they do the Arts and Crafts Festival, which are people coming in trying to sell products, those people, for a two-day event, pay $200, $225 for that event to be there, to sell product, to make money. Okay? I'm certain that these wonderful entrepreneurs, these farmers and these people that are making these products, are doing it to make money, and I applaud them. I think it's a wonderful thing. I want the entrepreneurial ship to continue. But I think we, as a town, have to stop giving everything away. I think there should be a fee of some kind for them to use our facilities. And I'm not asking for, I don't know what it should be, but I think there should be something there. Anybody? Yes?
I, I asked this question last year. I asked, I asked last year is, of some of the people, the farmer, are you aware, because they do a number of different farm stands. And I said, are you aware of any fees that you pay in any other places? And the answer I got was they were not. They were not paying the fees anywhere else. So one thing I'm curious about, if maybe you could come back to us with examples?
I, the only thing I can say is, as a businessperson, I paid taxes when I did business. And when I went to other places, you know...
I understand. I'm just saying, you know, the Farmers Market...
I'm just, I'm just tired of giving stuff away for free.
Thanks, thanks.
And that's just my, my thought on this. The fact that, gee, we've always done it for free, why should we charge people? That, you know, I don't, I don't like that argument, so...
Thank you, Mark. I think it's a well-made point.
Thank you for, thank you for listening.
Of course, always. I think it's an issue that we are at a place right now where we have an agreement that's going to be executed in the next couple of weeks, and I think at some point in time we'd have a discussion with, excuse me, we should have an evaluation of whether this is a topic we should take a look at for next year.
Thank you. And like I said, I don't want to come across and be against it.
I understand, Mark.
I think it is a wonderful thing.
I understand. Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much.
It's part of the larger conversation about what...
Yes.
...does this property need to do? And for, for me, I don't, charging the Farmers Market isn't really on the list of things that I would like to do, but I do want to see the property generate income in a different way so that we can continue to let the Farmers Market be there for free. But if we're not going to be able to generate income in any other way, then I do think we would have to talk about that kind of thing. And so I think that's part of the whole...
Yeah, I agree. It's a multifaceted element. I would agree with that. And like I said, we're at the juncture we're at right now, we're facing the signing a contract, and we're not going to be negotiating any kind of fees. And in parallel, we need to do some homework also on what is the norm, because my experience has been the same. I haven't seen a lot of states where Farmers Markets are charged for, you know, providing a public benefit of, you know, fresh veggies and meat and blah, blah.
It's not keeping us from doing anything else with the properties, the others.
That's correct. Absolutely, absolutely important. I totally agree with you. But with that, we'll, we'll table that agenda item, and we'll revisit it on the 7th, and Mike, you don't need to come back for that meeting. Thank you, anyway. And proceed on to discussion of the update on the June elections, nominations, and process, which is really more of a summary of where we are before we get to the more substantive matter of the warrant itself. And that is the, right now, Jody, do you want to just discuss the warrant as it stands, just to summarize it?
Yep. So for the one open chair on the Select Board, we have one person who has returned papers, and that's Mark Ratner.
Who's he?
Some guy. For school board of directors...
Personnel board. None.
I'm going on a different list, sorry.
Oh, sorry, dear.
Poor Jody.
Name on that other list, too?
Do you want it to be? School board, there are two open seats, and we have Rebecca Flanagan and Peter Orne, who have returned papers. For the personnel board, there was one chair open, and nobody has returned papers for that, which could be a write-in on, on the ballot. And for the charter commission, there were six open positions, and we have three returned nomination papers, Mark Haskell, Nancy Cottle Johnson, and Christopher McLean.
That is impressive.
That is impressive.
Mark, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I did run into Don White, who was a member of the Personnel Board, and I think his seat is up. And he said that he is, he'd be willing to serve again. He's pretty sure he'd be willing to serve again. He was not able to do the signatures in time to put it in, but he would be willing to serve again.
Okay, well.
In this conversation.
Sure. Well, in summary, though, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mark Haskell, Nancy Cottle-Johnson, and Christopher McLean for taking out papers to run for the Charter Commission. Yes, there will be three more. We'll need to get on that commission to make it six, and the Select Board will have nominated three per our charter. And we will investigate. There are various options we have to fill those slots going forward, and we'll revisit those as the months wear on, from everything from the Select Board's power, authority to name members to certain boards when somebody doesn't run. Maybe you could clarify that a little bit, Bill. But also, there's options with special town meetings and that kind of thing we could also arrange. Because we need to get that number on the Charter Commission.
And Personnel Board.
Well, briefly on the Charter Commission, the way that the statute reads is that the clerk is supposed to prepare the ballot the same way the clerk would for elected officials. So blank spaces with instructions to write in three should yield you what you need on the Charter Commission. And then you've got three nominations, so they will physically be printed on the ballot. But you'll get, I'm certain you'll get three more write-ins.
Probably.
And it'll be interesting.
As long as Daffy Duck isn't one of them, but.
So that will work just fine.
Okay, cool. Yeah, there will be, there will be three spaces on the ballot for that item. So I think that's all of the election summary part we have for the, for the June process. So we will proceed on to the approval of the order for the annual town meeting election on Tuesday, June 11th, 2019. And in that regard, we have a number of articles that are in a packet for, let's see, Article, well, the first would be Article 3, the Town of Camden amending the traditional village district to allow hotels in the traditional village district to open their restaurants to the public as long as there's no increase in seating, et cetera, et cetera. There's wording in here, and I can read it, but I just want to get any comments from the Select Board of any comments on the wording, or from you, Bill, as drafted currently on this.
A little bit too late for comments, though, unless we wanted to
You can make changes.
That's why we have Bill here, in case we wanted to finalize any changes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right?
Yes, absolutely.
But we can't say, well, let's work on this and come back.
No, actually, technically, it has to be printed tomorrow morning.
Right, that's what I was just clarifying.
So we don't have a lot of slack here on any one of these, but I could take them all at once, but I just wanna do them one at a time and either get a comment or a motion to accept the language as drafted for printing tomorrow for the warrant for June 11th. Do we have any comments from anybody?
I've already looked at this so much.
Yeah, me too. I've looked at it, Mark.
I mean, hopefully, I am really hopeful that there'll be a good reaction from the public because we made a huge effort to make it as understandable as we can within the bounds of the law. And so hopefully, it'll be a little bit easier for people to vote on things. That's still no substitute for doing the research ahead of time.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's the problem, is that people think that they should just be able to go in there and make their decision based on what they see in front of them. And there is no, there's nothing that we can do that will make that a system that really works well.
True.
So, I mean, sometimes it's better just to leave something blank if you don't know, rather than try to figure it out. But I think we've at least oriented people with they are gonna know what the issue is, whereas sometimes it's been really startling how confused people are.
Absolutely, Allison. The purpose of the notes is drafted to cross that difficult bridge between the difficult, not difficult, but exacting language of an ordinance as required by, you know, most states and to translate to those of us who have to vote as to the substance of it crisply and with no bias. And that's what the attempt has been here. But, Mark, do you have any comments on Article 3?
I think they're all extremely, extremely clear, the clearest we've ever had since we've started putting notes on. And I think they're all very well-worded, so I'm in total favor of all of them.
Okay. We can take them all, Articles, or one at a time?
I do have a general comment. I forgot that we were gonna, I believe that in the past, when recommendations were printed, that the planning board recommendation, where relevant, was also printed on the ballot. So I think my intention, when we had done this before, was, I think to some people, it might look like, oh, well, why is, you know, thank you, Select Board, for reinstituting this, but where's the planning board recommendation? I don't see why we wouldn't put the planning board.
Is it too late to change?
Nothing, no, it's not. It's just, I think technically, when we discussed this, we discussed, we kind of skipped right over Planning Board. We discussed Select Board only. We can certainly, I don't know what was done in the past for the Town of Camden. It has been in the past. We can certainly discuss it here and decide to, because it only applies to one, two, it only applies, zoning three, it applies to three of the five?
Yeah.
Four. It applies to four of the five, I believe.
No, no, three of the fours. Food sovereignty isn't.
Oh, okay, okay. So applies to.
One thing, we'll have to research it because
I mean, we don't have to research it. I, sorry.
The makeup of the zoning board in different meetings was different. They weren't always 5-0 votes. It was sometimes
Right. That's why, I mean, I did bring this up well in advance of this meeting, and I was asked to defer my comments instead of just in the
That's correct.
Bob said, I think you have to bring it up at the meeting. So I'm bringing it up at the meeting, but I did say exactly that, that I didn't want to bring it up at the meeting because we were gonna need to research the actual.
I ask this question, Janice, is it, is it gonna cause a research problem to put the planning board on these?
No, we just tried to genie it. As long as they've done their minutes.
All right. Then we could do a motion. We, we, yeah, I thought, it may be 4-0, 5-0, yeah, that's, that's
Oh, but their alternate gets to vote when there's not somebody there, right? So.
What Mark is saying, you might not, is Select Board, too, we have four people.
There were not always five people in the meeting, so they were not all 5-0 votes.
We can get that. We can get it. I'm not worried about that.
The other day, there were only three people at the meeting, so.
Even with all the, these alternate that they have?
Yes.
That's another issue, but I think what we could do is, we could, we could just, if that's the only other, is that the only comment here? We can make a motion to accept the language as is, adding to the three, the planning board vote as part of the warrant.
Unless that's a bad idea for some reason. Jeremy, do you upset, am I missing something? It seems to me that it makes sense to do. But if I'm, if there's a reason not to, I'd love to consider that.
I mean, it makes sense to me. I mean, I would defer to what we've done in the past, maybe to what Bill Kelly may have to say. Just throwing that out, but, I mean, the planning board spent a lot of time on all of these, and I think it does a little bit of disservice to all of the work that they put into it to not to mention something about it.
I really think that
It was unanimous, every one of them.
We've already crossed a bit of a bridge here because we're putting on a public, what is a public record? Which is a Select Board vote? So we're already kind of
This is what happened before. I feel, I don't need to research. I'm confident.
Trying not to be sexist, but yeah, we're a little bit pregnant, and I think adding the planning, well, because men can't get pregnant.
Who's pregnant?
Yeah, I missed, I missed it too, Allison. I don't know where that
Why is that relevant to why?
We're already halfway down the path, rather than saying we're already pregnant. We're already halfway down the path. We're putting the Select Board on, so adding the planning board is not a big deal.
Okay.
We'll talk later. But basically, so what we could do is
I mean, does it matter if it says 5-0 or 4-0, or what about just unanimous?
No, it needs to say that.
I mean, I think tomorrow, by tomorrow, when do you have to have this?
In the morning.
When's the morning?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
I'm sure it's not first thing. Check with Katrina, but.
All right. I mean, it'll be pretty easy for me to
You just go by whatever, when they give their final votes.
Yeah. It'll be pretty easy to do that.
Unless there's a dramatic objection, I suggest make a motion to add that to the
Fine, by me.
Do you wanna okay these all at once?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the wording for the written ballot.
I know.
With Articles 5, 6.
Articles 5, 3, 4, 5, 6.
5.
And, just for 3, 4, 5?
Yep.
And add in the appropriate vote for the Planning Board.
Sure.
Second.
Holes in favor?
The appropriate vote.
4-0. Thank you very much. Now, we have two others? Is that correct?
Yep, 6 and 7.
3 and, 3 and 7? Is that it?
6 and 7.
Yeah, 6 and 7. So do, without, no Planning Board action on those two because they're not zoning-related, so we could make a motion to accept those?
I make a motion that we accept the language for Articles 6 and Article 7 for the wording for the written ballot.
Second.
In favor? 4-0. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, thank you. So we should be able to get that into the printer tomorrow for the ballot for June 11th. Can't believe it's coming already. The next item on the agenda is to schedule a public hearing for the amendment to Chapter 8, Camden Police Ordinance, Part 5, Traffic Code, Section 7, One-Way Streets and Alleyies, to add Central Street as a, well, I should say, as a permanent one-way street to Schedule 1. That permits, it would be from Trim Street to Route 1, or basically, really, it's Mountain, High Street intersection. Yeah, Route 1.
I'll make a motion.
I was confused by that.
Well, we are scheduling in the public, last, you mean, from Trim Street to Route 1? Is that what you're questioning?
Yeah, I don't know what, that part is wrong.
Central Street is currently one-way from Trim Street, all the way out to the intersection of High and Mountain, Route 1.
That's the one we changed last year.
It's really Route 52.
Mountain Street.
It's Mountain, Mountain. Yet I say High.
But where's Trim Street coming from?
It's a parallel cross.
Cross over Central.
It's one road north of Cross.
You wanna make it one-way all the way up there?
Oh, yes.
What?
You guys won't know that last year.
Yeah, we did.
I thought it was just that little section.
From, not from 105.
What Allison's, what Allison's saying is, we thought it was from Cross Street to 52.
I thought it was Route 1.
Yeah, I think it's, you might be right.
I mean, I'm pretty sure.
I think this is, this is just for
We're just scheduling a public hearing.
To plan a public meeting, and then Randy will be here to describe.
Yeah, I know, but if we're gonna, we're gonna hold a public hearing, we might as well have it right.
You're right.
Otherwise, we're gonna have a lot of opinions. I'm against that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would have dug ourselves a bigger hole.
I mean.
Say for a week, two.
Yeah.
Set a trajectory.
Yes, that's correct.
Right.
Remember, the purpose of this scheduling this public hearing is to get it on to a potential town meeting, open town meeting vote on whatever day we have a town meeting.
Definitely, but we don't want that. We don't want
No, 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 no. It's really to extend what we already have approved and expires on July 10th of this year.
Make it permanent.
To make it permanent. And the intent was, the idea was, that among other options, that we could take this to the town meeting date. And I'm not sure what that date is. It may not be June 12th. We have options, we have, well, we have options now.
Depending on the ballot or if it's
Well, we can do, well, we can do Friday, Saturday, whatever day we wanna do, with the flexibility we have now.
I think we kinda already set it. We can change it next year, but.
You guys do this all by yourselves. It doesn't go to town meeting.
But we can send it to town meeting if we want.
No.
Um.
Because the statute says you shall be for these issues.
You shall be what?
You shall be the legislative body for traffic issues.
But our
3009, of Title 38.
That's what you sent me.
Yep.
It does say that.
Yep.
Then our, have you, our parking and our police ordinance has a massive amount, and there's an asterisk, asterisk next to the things that the Select Board can change on their own, and it's only next to the temporary.
I'll get you a copy of it. It's, it's Section 3009 that, it's been around forever, since the last 29 years I've been practicing. It's one of the very few areas where the Select Board is the legislative body.
Right, but then why do we have that massive parking and traffic ordinance that has all of these categories that people vote on?
I'd have to look at which ones you're talking about.
I mean, it's crazy.
I don't remember looking at it lately, but I can look at it.
Stared at it, and I still couldn't figure out exactly what needed to go to
Mm-hmm. Well, we're talking about the Camden Police Ordinance, the traffic section.
Part of the police ordinance, right. There's much of the police ordinance
Pretty big sub-part, but.
Right, but much of it would be determined by the town meeting instead of you, but the traffic part.
No, but in the past, we've voted, the town has voted on traffic elements. So you're saying we cannot, we can't ask the voters? We can't ask the residents about this?
Right. So the general gist of the ordinance is that public safety in terms of roads is not something that should be put out to sort of a public vote. It's more of a executive administrative type decision, because you could get a weird result depending on whatever agenda some folks might have. So like it or not, the state statute says that the elected officials shall deal with this issue.
But the public votes on closing roads altogether?
Oh, for winter maintenance, you mean?
No, for permanent closing.
Oh, for abandonment, a discontinuance?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. There's a whole complicated process for that.
Have we been through it?
But that has to do with rights, not the safety issue of how you use it.
I see.
Where the parking is, if, and sometimes you can petition for speed limits, but DOT likes to, is involved with those, one-way. Those are yours, where the stop signs go, yield sign. I didn't write the ordinance, the statute.
I thought you told me that Bill said we could make the decision on our own, but that we
I was under the impression we had an option, but apparently not. He did tell me that this, the ordinance gives us the power.
Yep. Well, if I wasn't clear yet, it's an exclusive thing. It's, and every town does it that way.
Basically, there's one thing we can do.
That's about it.
Set the rates for the snowball. We can also set the rates for the snowball.
So we don't, so effectively, we all have to do this at some point in the future.
Yeah, the public hearing part of it was just because you should have that, but you're having it here as one of your agenda items, and then, and you can literally vote right after that if you wish.
But we, that's the case, we don't need to push it towards the 7th because the 7th was originally discussed as a possibility because of maybe putting on the warrant for the special, the town meet, open town meeting in that first week of June. If we don't go there, then we, this, this doesn't expire till July 10th. The current restriction or change doesn't expire till July 10th, so we have time.
We can delay. One of the problems is our police chief is on vacation May 7th, so he wasn't gonna be here to speak to us, and I think it's important to happen.
Our ordinance only says that we can do it. We need to update our ordinance so it's understandable, because it only says that we can do temporary, temporary traffic measures.
I, I don't have the language in front of me, so I can't.
I'm looking right now.
Oh, it's, we should all do this on our own time, probably, and not waste
Yeah, I think so. We can solve it here.
Then we can.
But, yeah, Mark's pointed out having Randy here, because I think part of, at least from my perspective, part of the reason for making that a temporary decision was to evaluate that, and Randy was a piece of
Oh, yeah, it was his idea.
So.
Well, he had
I'd like to know if we have any, if there's any new information since we put the temporary
He has sent that. The only information that's new is that he did check the, at the accident rate after, after the close, there was three. Two were accidents, and one, one was caused because of the one-way. And that occurred because somebody was pulling off of Main Street to take a left onto Cross, realized it was one-way and backed out and rear-ended somebody.
Hmm.
Okay.
So that was, that statistic is available. Beyond that, from what Randy tells me, there's not, there's no other data available about it.
Do we ever get the data from before?
We can get it. We can certainly get it for what time period, you know. The longer the time period, the more accident data you're gonna have, of course.
Right, then you divide by the time period.
Well, and besides, and you're gonna, in the limited data of the three actions, one was caused because of, and drivers didn't see this, stopped, don't go in there, and tried to back out on it. Prior to that, we can certainly look at the 52 intersections, see what accident rates occurred, but then you start to get into, you know, what caused the accident.
Can we do a non-binding referendum?
Sure.
You could do a non-binding
Like Strah poll.
Strah poll, yeah.
You could do a non, absolutely. You could put that to the voters on almost any topic.
Yeah, we could do that without, without crafting language for it. We could just do it at the open town meeting.
Or maybe we could just have a big discussion at town meeting.
But again, the reason he said that they, that we don't do that is because sometimes you get, it's a safety issue, and we get, you get issues where people have an agenda, and it colors the vote.
Yeah, I think that's what happened. I'm pretty sure that's why we voted to do it. We did.
Well, I actually think it was a good idea. I've always thought it was a good idea.
If we went for a non-binding on the June open town meeting, would we have to craft some language to put into that warrant for that evening? Or can we just bring it up as a, as a, an item during the meeting?
It'd just be a fun, I don't know.
You mean, well, typically
I'm not saying we definitely should do this, by the way.
No, I'm just, we're just discussing.
Typically, they're, they're done as part of the, one of the ballots, and so they're done to get maximum input because, of course, you have hundreds more people who go to the
Oh, of course.
We miss that deadline.
Yeah, that's behind us.
So that would, that's been the way in everyone I've ever done has been that way. I suppose you could do, hand out something at the town meeting if you wish. That doesn't harm anything. It's just isn't gonna be legally effective, so there's no harm.
Non-binding referendum.
Yeah. Fill it out in their seats, I guess.
My feeling is that a public hearing here with us advertised on the issue is more than sufficient. Or we could not act on it at all, and then it just goes away as a temporary ban.
Wait, if we don't do anything, but July 10th, it goes away?
Right. I'm also fine with that.
All right.
Yeah, I just prefer not to make the decision because I think that it is not a major safety issue. It's a, it's a matter of preference, and it comes down to a majority. I think that we are, we've made a change that inconveniences the majority, you know, in favor of a, of a sort of dubious gain for the minority, a very small, I mean, we're talking about a very small amount of people, and I just think this isn't a
I disagree 100%. I think it was a good change. It keeps, it keeps traffic off residential streets, exceptional traffic off the residential seats. And I think that's an important thing. Nobody wants that kind of traffic.
Yeah, we all have plenty of time to
Yeah, we have plenty of time to, that's the key word. We have plenty of time, how so? What I'm gonna suggest is we table this public hearing setting date agenda item, because we don't, we're in no great hurry. Because we, the options we have are to, you know, to know, to, well, we don't have July 10th, first of all, and we can always decide between now and June, whatever, to do a non-binding kind of a thing at the open town meeting if we desire to do so for input, not for, not for binding resolution. So we have some time on, so I would table this and not specify another date for, at this point, for looking at a public hearing date.
If you wait for the first meeting in July, you'll have a new me to, so I could change my vote by then, because I'll be a new-
Now that you won't be under pressure from the election.
I'll be a brand-new person, so that's fine. Thank you, Bill. Thank you very much.
With that, I think we should just quickly cover, before the video presentation, a couple of the quick items, so we can get them off the agenda, and that is basically to update the, update regarding the closure of the Ross and Avenue Bridge. And this is more of a public information discussion than anything, because it has been done. I saw it today.
I wish I had more information, but I've been in contact with Jamie Andrews with the DOT. Nobody, if you haven't heard, the Ross and Avenue Bridge was closed last Wednesday by the Department of Transportation. It's a bridge that was constructed back in 1935. So they found numerous deficiencies in the bridge and reduced the vehicle weight to five tons, I believe, last year.
Correct.
And now they abruptly called last, a week ago Friday, and announced that they were gonna close the bridge, eventually to disassemble the bridge. So I reached back out to Jamie and to find out when. They had planned on disassembling the bridge, and they don't have any plan in the next three years to do that, so it's going to be-
Well, the clarification on that is a couple of things. One is, the actual report that they provided us from MDOT, it suggests that this prohibition of both traffic and pedestrians on the bridge, which we need to emphasize because it's a safety thing, is in place until the bridge is either demolished or replaced. And that's the MDOT report. It says either. So we have had some discussions with MDOT, Audrey I know has, in prior months regarding the replacement of the bridge, and it really hasn't come to any conclusion whatsoever. I'm not suggesting it is, but I think the most important thing is to, that we have to, when Audrey gets back, to reinsert ourselves in the discussion with MDOT about the future of that, that whole operation. But I do want to emphasize, it's closed. It'd be easy to walk over it, because it's, the barricades are not fenced. It prohibits a pedestrian from walking over, but I just wanted to clarify that the prohibition is for both pedestrian and traffic.
But, I mean, it's, we're not, we're not sending our police department out to try to make sure that people aren't, I mean, really what they're saying is it's, I mean, and this is my opinion here, this is not the opinion of the town, or whatever, but it's a cross-at-your-own-risk kind of a thing, like-
We can't even encourage people to do it.
Well, I'm not encouraging people to do it, but I'm just saying that-
Their words was that they are going to, they're not gonna police the crossing of the bridge by pedestrians, but it's more of an honor system that we feel people would respect the fact that we have closed, the DOT has closed the bridge to all traffic.
And pedestrians.
And pedestrians, yes. Foot and vehicle traffic, so.
Yeah, that's just what the report says. And we're just stating it for the record, but would I, has it across it? Sorry. I don't think it should be closed to traffic. But, but it is a problem. We'll have to address it when Audrey gets back.
Yes.
And the town will, and we will. We'll continue that discussion, because that's an important road.
So they have no plans to demolish it within the next three years?
Nothing in the next three years.
Is on the-
So, because presumably, if it, if it really is gonna fall down, it poses an environmental hazard. So the fact that they have not designated it as-
No, no, they, like I said, the report specifically says this prohibition is in place until demolition or replacement.
Okay.
So I, but it's important, it's important to, yeah.
Time to negotiate.
Well, yeah, but we don't want to delay with MDOT regarding the future of that thing. We need to get into, reengage the discussions ASAP.
But when Audrey comes back, Jody doesn't have to do it?
That's what I said, when Audrey gets back. Do you have a comment you want to make?
Yes.
Please.
Wyatt McConnell, live at 63 Ross and Avenue, two driveways down from the bridge.
There you go.
I have the big sign. It's apparently a barrier. It's not enough to let people know the bridge is closed.
Thank you for hosting it.
It's not a, it's not a very clear sign, by the way, I didn't think.
No, none of the signs are very clear. It seems to tell you that the bridge is closed and point you towards, driving towards the closed bridge.
That's what I, that's what I saw, so I drove right to the closed bridge.
Bad bridge is closed.
It was either choosing the closed bridge or into a tree. I couldn't figure which one it was.
So I, I just wanted to highlight-
Oh, your mic isn't-
Oh, would you please turn that mic on, please? Sorry about that.
Wyatt McConnell, 63 Ross and Avenue, live in Camden. So I wanted to highlight how important that bridge is for pedestrian traffic in that neighborhood. There are a number of kids that walk to the middle school and cross that bridge every morning. If you don't cross that bridge, you've gotta go all the way around Ames Terrace, which is a dangerous road to walk on. It's blind uphill and around the corner, and during the winter, there's no, there's no sidewalk there, period. So during the winter, you've got nothing to walk on. That adds about a half a mile to the walk to the middle school from my house. It's, it was about four, a little over four tenths of a mile by my car just driving around. And so the walk from the middle school from my house to, from my house to the middle school is about a third of a mile, and you're adding another half mile to that walk.
Sure.
So that's pretty substantial. We bought our house specifically because it's within walking distance of town. We walk downtown for drinks and dinner all the time. If I have to go up around Ames Terrace to do that, or if I go the other way on Ross, and there's no sidewalk, and it's dark, and there's no side, so, you know, the only, I mean, it's, so I wanted to highlight the importance of that as a pedestrian crossing, and that that's the main, the main dynamic that I hear in the neighborhood from other people is that as long as we can walk across it, it's very useful.
I, I believe we had, we looked at some options for it, and one of them was a pedestrian bridge, strictly a pedestrian bridge.
Well, we had, Gartley and Doroski came here and discussed a couple of different options, which is, which were at that point substantially cheaper than the options that MDOT had discussed in terms of cost. One of them was for pedestrian-
No, they didn't do pedestrian.
Yeah, they didn't.
I thought they did do one for pedestrian.
No.
Well, they presented a couple of different options for a bridge.
There were two options. Neither one of them was pedestrian.
Okay, thank you, clarification, but I understood and I've heard of other people doing it. You know, it's kind of an open book at the moment, and we just have to drill into it quickly.
Yeah, I didn't walk across the grid, the bridge coming down here.
You didn't?
No, not at all.
Thank you, that's on the-
That is a pedestrian crossing.
That's on the record.
Send anyone over to check.
Yeah, I was like, wow, Wyatt does follow the rules.
Thank you, Wyatt.
Thank you for coming.
But, yeah, I mean, maybe, it is kind of an awkward position that they've-
It is.
-everybody in by saying, and it's an awkward position for us to be in a little bit, too. So maybe there's something we could do, like an engineer that could, you know, there would be an interim option that could say, well, if you just do this, this, and this, it could be cleared for, you know, officially cleared for pedestrian crossing for the next, however.
Well, we're gonna engage in a conversation with MDOT engineers, because they're the ones that wrote the report, and we honestly, in fairness to Jody and everybody, we haven't had a heck of a lot of great response real quickly from our friends at MDOT at the moment, but we will. I guarantee we will. Anyway, I just wanted to get, just wanted to clarify the summary of the report, and so everybody's aware of the closure, which is existing today. Lastly, before we jump to a fun video, is just Snowball Financial Update. Jody, I think you sent the last report, which indicated-
I did. I just emailed it to you guys. I'm sorry. I'm, I tried to upload it to your admin drive or something. It didn't work, but anyway, so you have it. So this is as of tomorrow's payroll. We have minute expense for comp time that, that may have been earned, and now they are taking advantage of it. It's minimal for the, for the regular employees. And we also now will be, just be $300, $500 a month on electricity, and we're also expecting another at least $12,000 for, from the ski club. We have not received it yet. So as of right now, we're $50,700 in the black for the snowball, so.
Revenue's ahead of expenses.
Yes.
And we, and we still, I think, are projecting that miscellaneous, miscellaneous, we're still probably in the range of 40, between 35 and 45, probably.
Yes, I would love to see 45, because we want to use $33,000 from this year as a carryforward for next year for a groomer-
Yep.
-repair-
Yep.
For $33,000, so.
Yep, okay.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that's Snowball update. With that, the last agenda item is a review of a, a video that Allison and friends have created that addresses the initiative with regard to the dams that currently exist. Six of them?
Well, it's dams and culverts and all kinds of barriers and-
All kinds of things on McGunticook River from the McGunticook River to the harbor. And so with that-
The lake, too.
The lake, too. Yeah, that's true. Good point. But we thought it would be beneficial for the public to see this video, which has been very professionally done. I've seen portions of it, and to-
Well, hold on.
Well, it was. It was very professionally done. From my perspective, I'm not a professional, but, but still, it was well, well done. So Allison, do you want to intro it and take us through it?
Sure, and I kind of want to wait for Mark to come back, because-
We can take a two-minute pause while we're waiting for breaks, minor breaks.
Because really, it's not so much about showing it to the public as showing it to the select board tonight and getting everybody's, I think, approval is what I'm seeking to begin, well, I'm just waiting until Mark.
Here he is.
Okay, so, so tonight's not so much about the pub, wanting to show this to the public as wanting to show it to the select board. It's a video that I've been working on with sort of all the information, or actually just a small part of the information that I've compiled as we've been working on the Montgomery Dam study. That report has taken a long time, but they have been extraordinary with their willingness to do additional work, and what we've ended up with is actually a lot of knowledge, not just about the impact of the Lower Montgomery Dam, but sort of how it, really the larger system as well, because there's no way you can look at whether it makes sense to restore fish passage at the Montgomery Dam without also taking a look upstream a little bit. So we've learned a lot. That report is gonna be done in the next, in the final draft. Right now, it'll probably be released in a few days here. And that brings us to wanting to, I'd like to be able to privately fundraise for some of this stuff. A lot of the grants that we are working on applying for have a, a big matching component, and some of that would just come from the current obligations that the town already has with the very expensive dams that, you know, all of that works as a, as a matching component, too. But we need to be able to show a little bit more public support, and, and then there's just gonna be an ongoing, ongoing need for funds. So I'd like to be able to privately fundraise. I think we could raise many, many thousands of dollars. There are two ways that we could accomplish that. One would be through the, you know, just the town setting up a fund like we've done in the past, and people could donate to that. My preference would be that we partner with an organization, an environmental organization, like the Nature Conservancy would be my choice, and working on discussing that with them, so that any, you know, they would hold like a McGunticook River, McGunticook Watershed Restoration Fund, and then people would be able to donate, knowing that an organization like the Nature Conservancy or similar, the main rivers, would be also a guardian of those funds, so that it wouldn't be subject to, you know, some future select board saying, I think this counts as restoring the watershed. So I'm gonna show you a video, and, yes, if, maybe turn those lights down? The town speaker system is a little bit-
Does the machine have to be turned on?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Most definitely. It's gonna shut itself off completely.
Yeah, it is.
I thought it-
It's coming up.
So I'll turn this on, and then I think I've succeeded in boosting the audio past what would normally be advisable, because the town speakers are so-
It's got a very dim-
Yeah, it's coming on.
More lights?
Um, no, that's okay. Oh, that might be a little too much. I don't know.
Will you turn one light on?
Yeah, leave one on, side lights.
Growing up in Camden, I never thought much about the river that runs through our town, other than the deep, slow-moving part known as Shertail, where we would swim. It wasn't of much use to me. It's hard to even track the river as it twists and turns and obscures itself under buildings, coming out different sizes and sometimes different colors as it winds its way to the harbor. But as it turns out, before Camden was known for its brick buildings and beautiful boats, people were drawn to the area for this small but mighty stream called McGunticook, and the whole town used to go by the same name. As soon as I joined the select board, I started having to make decisions about all kinds of things that I didn't understand. So I find I'm constantly asking questions like, what are we talking about, and why are we doing it? It didn't take long before dams came up on the agenda, and I began hearing about all the expenses that go along with them. They need to be inspected, insured, maintained, and adjusted. They cost the town hundreds of thousands of dollars, and so I got to work asking lots of questions about each one. Some of them serve the purpose of maintaining a desirable water level that is elevated for recreational purposes, but some of them, like the town-owned Montgomery Dam, where the river enters the harbor, are today basically aesthetic in their purpose. Wait, what? St. Duane is a concrete wall in the middle of a river, considered beautiful. Okay, people like waterfalls, but it's not the kind of waterfall you see out in nature. It's more like a wildlife border wall that was built for a purpose it no longer serves. Back when water wheels were the main form of power, the dam forced water away from its natural course, which was through the Harbor Park walkway, and into the basement of the Camden grist mill, and later to the textile mill and anchor factory on the public landing. Ingenious and purpose-filled at the time, but today, it does no such thing, and instead creates a muddy bathtub that is blocking fish from accessing an entire watershed and depriving an entire ecosystem of an essential part of the food web. So while the dam itself may technically belong to the town of Camden, Camden Harbor and the McGunticook River are gateways that connect the Atlantic Ocean to an entire region that is shared by many. Most of us recognize the importance of migratory birds, but what I didn't realize is that migratory fish are actually just as important.
Every spring, the river fills with a type of fish called an alewife. Alewives, a kind of herring, are enadrumous fish, which means they live in the ocean, but they migrate temporarily into freshwater to spawn.
When they return inland after years at sea, they help to complete a cycle that has sustained life for thousands of years, carrying nutrients from the sea back to the land, fertilizing the soil, and providing nourishment to everything from otters to ospreys. When dams are installed without fish passage, the natural cycle is broken. Not only are sea-run fish prevented from traveling upstream, but species such as native brook trout, which were once abundant, can't move up and down the river as temperatures and conditions change. These fish need cold, well-oxygenated water with lots of rocky crevices to lay their eggs. When dams hold back water in impoundments, they also trap sediment that smothers the natural stream bottom that the fish depend on. Cold, rocky streams like McGunticook are slowed down, heated up, and transformed by layers and layers of mud. McGunticook River still has pockets of highly suitable habitat, but when fish tumble over our dams, they have no way of getting back. When fish can't spawn- our dams, they have no way of getting back. When fish can't spawn, they can't reproduce, and it didn't take long for the wild population to die out. But what about fish from the sea? Not being a fish expert, I started by listening to a few who promptly told me that they'd never heard of alewives trying to get past the dam in Camden Harbor. But soon, I read a mention of alewives in the Camden Town Meeting Notes from 1806. Sure enough, once I recalibrated my eyes to read 200-year-old cursive, I could see that a request had indeed been made to examine whether the dam owners could be forced to open up sluice ways to allow for the passage of alewives and other fish from the harbor to what was called the large pond above Mullinow's Mills. A committee was formed, and there was mention of petitioning the state legislature to compel the dam owners to comply. But it appears that nothing came of it in Camden. The first permanent settlers came to McGuntica Harbor in 1769 and got right to work leveraging the river's power by blasting bedrock, damming the flow, and molding the landscape in more ways than have been possible to properly document. The little stream that runs behind the middle school turned water wheels that powered the production of everything from flour, paper, and textiles to anchors, gravestones, and gunpowder. Yes, gunpowder, right here in Camden. We don't use the river for power today, but we still need some of the dams to maintain deep water for swimming and boating, and in some places, just to fill in for Mother Nature. For example, the two dams at the outlet of the lake that are now owned by the town of Camden used to be owned by the downtown mill owners who used them to regulate the amount of water that was sent downstream to their mills. In the late 1800s, when there was a drought and not enough water was flowing, they went so far as to blast the outlet of the lake so they could lower it below its natural limits. Evan Ferneld and others living on the lake were furious, and they were even granted an injunction by the Maine Supreme Perhaps unsurprisingly, this had all taken its toll, and by the late 1800s, a state law was passed banning fishing in the entire McGunticook watershed. One last effort to save dwindling native fish populations, and even that didn't work. At that point, though, they needed the river for everything from powering mills to washing sewage and sawdust out to sea. So shortly thereafter, the town seems to have given up on wild fish surviving in the lakes and streams on their own at all. A better idea was brewing nationwide. Why not bypass Mother Nature altogether and raise the fish in tanks and release them where we want them? The town requested a hatchery be funded by the state at the base of McGunticook Lake, and so began the tradition that continues today.
The numbers that are desirable by anglers wouldn't be as much if we didn't do our stocking. Favorite part of the job is seeing the expression on those folks' faces when they realize that the fishing all of a sudden just got way better. Stocking is a very important job. What we're doing is essentially giving Mother Nature a boost. We stock about 1.2 million fish a year, so we're creating that opportunity for folks to go out and have a real good chance of catching a fish. And that's what it's all about.
From a recreational fishery standpoint, the strategy worked, and fishing opportunities were greatly improved. But we never have succeeded in restoring the true biodiversity of the river that has given us so much. Isn't that crazy? After going to the Damroskata Fish Ladder to look and see all of those fish going up, I came back to Camden, maybe I can find some. And the first day, I didn't find any. But the second day, there were at least 100 that I could see with my eyes, alewives, trying to swim up, up to the dam. I mean, it was just the most exciting thing that, that has happened to me. We're realizing that these dams that we put in 200 years ago, because that was the only way for us to power our mills, the dams are still here, and we've gotten attached to the way they look in some cases, but they're blocking an entire ecosystem from doing what it was originally intended to do. Now is the time to ask ourselves, what do we want Camden to be known for? We have peregrine falcons, osprey, bald eagles, and bobcats. But why do we need the state of Maine to raise our fish in hatcheries when we have dozens of miles of cold, rocky streams perfectly suited for the native populations that used to thrive here all on their own? I believe we should invest in a healthy river that attracts abundant wildlife, in a river that attracts tourists, not with a contrived concrete barricade and artificial waterfall, but a freely flowing river that tumbles over the natural ledge that exists there. What could be more beautiful than that? What could be more beautiful than the return of native fish runs and sustained wild brook trout populations to the McGuntica watershed? What if you could eat your ice cream and peer over this footbridge, not just at ducks and the occasional wayward hatchery fish, but at eagles and ospreys and thousands of native fish heading upstream to spawn? It's happening all across New England, as towns, private landowners, and organizations are working to reconnect rivers and streams to the Atlantic Ocean. Fish are returning to places they haven't seen in hundreds of years, and the time is right to finish what the townspeople started here in Camden back in 1806.
If there is something we need, it's a leap of faith. A step away from the comfort zone and be a little brave. So, take a look around you. How far can you see? How far do you think you can run standing on your knees? It's a beautiful world out there. Just don't pass on the dare. If you have the will and a moment to spare, it's a beautiful world out there. It's a beautiful world out there. It can be a bit frightening, something you don't know. You need a little enlightening. It'll make you grow. It's a beautiful world out there. Just don't pass on the dare. If you have the will and a moment to spare, it's a beautiful world out there. It's a beautiful world out there. It's a beautiful world out there. Just don't pass on the dare.
If it was for you, now I'd take that one.
If you have the will and a moment to spare, it's a beautiful world out there. It's a beautiful world out there. If you have the will and a moment to spare, it's a beautiful world out there. It's a beautiful world out there.
Thank you. I don't know why I was shaking. I wasn't doing that on my computer, but.
It wasn't shaking.
It, it was something off, but.
Well, it's an absolutely great fundraising tool.
So, what I'm hoping is that this can, isn't just like Allison's project, because I really, the reason that we've been able to move forward with this at all is because there's been so much support from the select board, from people in town. So, I would sort of like permission and a vote to, from the select board ideally, tonight, if possible, just showing support for the project and allowing, allowing the video to go on like town channels and, you know, permission to solicit.
I make a motion that we allow Allison to place the video on town channels, and what else do you need?
Well, it's basically to utilize the tools, a representation of the, from the town to the public, and whatever, whatever media that's determined to be advantaged.
Right, and you know, also to go out and say, we're, you know, we're trying to raise money to.
Yep.
To, to restore the, restore Fish Passage, to restore water quality throughout the watershed, and to have that, just like people would donate to, let's think of a good example, where we've raised money for something before, like, you know, the Opera House, if somebody wanted to donate money to an Opera House show, or to a playground somewhere.
Private fund.
That, I just think, you know, sometimes this might just go on without, it happens all the time that the town takes in money for one thing or another. But to me, it's important that it's done, I don't think I should be out there saying that the town is raising money for something unless the rest of the select board.
Absolutely.
Is okay with that. Because otherwise, I don't want to put, you know, the town of Camden's logo on something, or.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to be able to throw in the town of Camden's logo at the end of the video, but only if there's support from the rest of the select board.
No, I just wanted to say, it's critically important for grants, because when, when I applied for the Around the Mountain Trail grant through the feds, through the state, they need a copy of kind of a vote that was taken by the select board showing that, that you support this and that you're moving that forward. So, I'm just saying that it's critically important to.
Agreed.
For funders.
Thank you.
That they see support from select board.
Thanks, Sharon.
Right, because with private organizations, it's like they apply for grants, and they can say, well, of course, the Nature Conservancy supports river restoration. But a lot of the questions I'm getting from people are, I, I need a way of showing how much public support there is. You know, how are, how are decisions about the dams, at least these four, made in Camden? And there's, there are certainly examples out there of people.
I have a question. When is the alewife run? When do they, when do you see them trying to climb up the?
Yeah, so, they, the Damroskata Mills Fish Ladder, they have their festival May 25th this year, I believe, so.
So, it's coming up.
Yes, very much. So, this is also the reason to do it now, is so that people start, you know, paying attention, look around, see what's.
Check out the harbor.
In the harbor.
Cool.
Reports, you know, fish sightings and.
So, back to your motion, Margaret, you pretty much had it.
Yeah, the motion basically to supply what we need to buy for grants, and to move forward to hopefully restore fish habitat for the McGunticook River.
And to raise funds.
And to support fundraising, and basically, the town is supporting this tool as a principal, one of the principal tools to support what Mark just summarized.
How about I come back next, you know, I can sort of just get the general vibe tonight, which I think, and if you have any comments. And then I'll come back next time with a, with a pre-drafted motion that sort of includes all the things that we might need.
That's a good idea.
But just if there are any, you know, I wanted to show it tonight to have you say, oh, you know, this or that, or anything that you, there's still an opportunity to change things, or.
I'm a big fan of concrete. I mean, concrete's just really important. And especially on the dinner table, concrete, you know.
Concrete discussions.
Concrete salad is.
Concrete discussions.
Exceptionally.
Okay, with that, great job. I'm not clever enough to be able to make a comment.
Yeah, well, I'd like to say something.
Please.
Certainly been paying attention to Allison talking quite a bit about this, and couldn't agree more that it's a very worthy and important thing to be looking at. I'm an avid fly fisherman, and the state stocks a little section of McGunticook there every year, and the fish are stuck in that little section and can't go anywhere else, and it doesn't make a ton of sense. And I'd love nothing more than to be able to see, us find an effective way to get it back to a natural habitat.
And in one bigger picture, it also fits in with everything we've done as a board in the last couple of years in terms of Global Covenant of Mayors, Solar Farm, you know, being as nature-aware of, you know, what's important is an essential thing, and it's another piece of that whole puzzle about which makes Camden special.
Yeah, I mean, we have a really big opportunity. Previously, when, when the state was looking at places where they can restore habitat for, for species that are either listed or on the verge of being listed on the endangered species list, and they're seeing Maine as like the last best hope for a lot of these sea-run fish. Previously, they had said, oh, it's just too mu, you know, Camden, even though there's so, you know, 1,500 acres of alewife habitat in McGunticook Lake, and dozens of miles of streams that could be good spawning habitat, they've said the political challenge might be too much for them to focus there. But now that we've said, no, the town is really proactive about it, the, the response that we've gotten from, from the Department of Marine Resources, and from all the state agencies is like, no, wow, that would be, that would be a huge environmental benefit. So, it's.
I think the one other thing I'll say about it is, we have the river, the watershed, and most people don't have that. So, we're the stewards of something that most people don't have, and if we don't treat it properly, we're not doing our job.
An economic development thing.
Yeah, well, we have to do the same thing with the ocean. But with that said, I agree with you, let's craft something ASAP to bring to the agenda so we can get, at that time, well, I'm sure we'll be five of us here, and we'll all be supporting it like crazy. With that, I guess we've completed the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Favor. Four zero, we're off the air.